I saw the on-air sign, so I think we're ready to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the school committee meeting of August 16th, 2021 to order. It is 5:29 by my phone, so we're ready to go. Madam Secretary, could I ask for attendance, please?
Mr. Secretary now.
Ah, Mr. Secretary.
Yeah, Diane isn't here today. So, Robyn Diaz here. Diane Mayhew is absent. Beau Sullivan.
Here.
Cindy Sullivan.
Here.
Heather Sullivan.
Here.
Tim O'Connor.
Here.
Shaver Humison.
Here. Would you like to join us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, to all nations under our rule, universal, with the victory of justice for all.
The next part of our agenda is item number two, public participation, excluding personnel. As I said before the meeting began, we have 30 minutes tonight. We have a signup sheet for people who came in who wanted to testify. We'll just ask that each person who go up to the microphone, give their name and address, and limit their comments to three minutes, and I'll have an alarm to help people along, so. Cindy?
Dr. Kevin Pagetti, please.
Hello, my name is Dr. Kevin Pagetti. I live at 24 Whispering Wind Road here in Westfield. I am a doctor in the chiropractic sciences, chiropractic medicine. I have my bachelor's in the biological sciences from Trinity College and about 30 years of experience in the sciences. I have four children in the Westfield school systems, and I'm here as an advocate for my children. It seems to me that the teachers' unions kind of have their own interests at mind here and not our children. My main point here to start with is I think we should have freedom of choice. The kids should be allowed to decide whether they want to wear the mask or not, or the parents can decide for them. I've always felt that if you think the masks work so well, then why don't you wear your mask and let the other people make their own decisions? Me wearing my mask does not make you more safer. You wearing your own mask, if you think it works, then you can go ahead and wear that. So, moving on a little bit here as far as masks. Masks have actually been proven to be ineffective, especially the ear-loup mask. I have here a copy of a box of your common ear-loup mask, which tells you right on the box that it does nothing to provide any protection against COVID-19, right on the box. But apparently, we forget about those obvious things when it comes to all of the fear and anxiety around this virus. I've also got CDC's own chart here describing all of the diseases that are more likely to kill our children than COVID. The flu comes in at four times more likely for children one to four years old. It's also more likely for children five to 14 years old for them to die from the flu than it is from COVID. And we certainly haven't been wearing masks for the last, you know, 20 years or however long. So, I think that's pretty obvious right there. If we're not wearing them for that, we shouldn't be wearing them for this. And then drowning, homicides, suffocation, all of these things are more likely to kill our child than COVID. Also, masking our children. There's a lot of effects people are not really thinking about here, which is if you make a kid wear a mask in school, they become a chronic mouth breather. That has drastic effects on their adenoids, causing enlargement of the adenoids. It actually retards maxillofacial development as well, and it causes dysfunction of the bones in the face. And it causes abnormal growth in the face. All for something that has a less than 99.7% chance of killing one of our kids. Also, the other thing with the masks is if kids can't see facial expressions, it slows their development cognitively.
Sorry, did that turn on for three minutes?
Is that it? All right. It's not much time, but unfortunately, that's it, I guess.
Um, Tim Stoops?
I am Tim Stoops. I live at 35 Knollwood Drive, and that's a tough act to follow right there. I concur with him completely. I ask only, you leave these decisions to the parents. Let us make it a decision for ourselves. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Britton?
Hi, my name is Jessica Britton. I have two properties in Westfield, one that my ex-husband resides at and one that I currently own on my own. I am a mother of three. I had my daughter graduate this last year from the Technical Academy, and I have two children that are now going to be in the intermediate school. My son Jace, and then my other son Max. I asked my kids, and I said, you know, going into the school year, what are some of the concerns that you normally have before COVID? Before adding this pressure on? And, you know, some of the main things are, you know, am I going to be liked? Am I going to make friends? Are teachers going to like me? Am I going to be bullied? Am I going to learn things and get it and understand and be happy and not have to worry about social and political pressure that has moved their way into the school system? I have seen it firsthand on the discussions that these teachers have on Zoom, on how we push the vaccine, how we push a political agenda, and it is not okay. Some of the positives is obviously meeting new friends and seeing your old teachers and being on a regular schedule, being in person in school. Now we bring in masks. What do they do? There are psychological and social effects. Our kids are now created into a two-tier system. You have the vax and the unvax, a vaccine that is only EUA-approved. I should know. I come from Big Pharma. This is, I'll show you guys, when you go and get your vaccine and you're feeling great about yourself, this is a real drug approval. This is the drug I sell in rheumatology. It's full of information. When you go to get your vaccine, this will be completely blank because you are the clinical trial participant. If you are going to wait for masks, for the vaccine to be fully approved, to be mandated in order for masks to drop, I am sorry, I will be protesting outside of every school. I will be fighting everyone I can to make sure that our kids go mask-free. I think the science is clearly there, and it's been propagated to make everyone believe a certain story because it goes along with a political agenda. And I will not allow my children to be in school wearing a mask. This is it. Enough is enough. And if I have to pull my kids, quit my job, homeschool, I will do it all. I will find a way to make this happen because I know the science. I know the science more than most people. I know how to read a PI. I understand it. I sell in the immune system, and what you guys are doing with our children, what they're learning in school with the max, with the vaccine focus, is absolutely disgusting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Seckard?
My name is Nick Seckard. Address 164 Pontius Hill Road. Hi, I'm going into sixth grade at Westfield Intermediate School. I would like you all to consider not having masks upcoming school year. I want to be able to talk to my friends and understand what my teachers are saying when they are teaching. Masks create a barrier between myself and my peers. Masks are also extremely hard to wear, especially during the heat, considering there's no air conditioning or no airflow in classrooms. All teachers have the option to get the vaccine if they're concerned about getting COVID. I had COVID back in November. I had a fever for three days and then I was better. It was all, it was less severe than having the flu, but I understand some kids get it worse. My proposal is to allow students who don't want to wear a mask to be put in a mask-free classroom, and students that want to wear a mask or at higher risk to be put in a full-masked classroom. A survey can be sent out, and students can be put into mask-free classes or mask-mandated classes, depending on their choice. I'm fine if I wear a mask in the hallway to change classes, but I want to be able to talk to my friends and breathe in class, and I feel like it's my right and my parents' right to decide. Please, I ask you to consider the solution. It would really help all the students. Thank you.
John Bowen?
Hi, John Bowen, 38 Pinehurst Street. At the end of this month, we're going back to our third year of school with COVID-19. As a country, we did many things in the past to help prevent the spread of the virus. Most of them did not work and caused worse consequences. We cannot continue to make emotional decisions about scientific situations. Tonight, we're here to discuss forcing children to wear masks in school yet again. There are, however, scientific reports, I'm sorry. There's absolutely no scientific data to support the fact that masks worked. There, however, are scientific reports that masks do harm to children physically and mentally. Forcing children to wear masks cause anxiety. And other studies stated forcing children to re-breathing their own oxygen causes air-created oxygen deficiency and flooding of carbon dioxide. Children have the lowest statistic of infection and are rarely severe. I did copy some of Kevin's notes. Masks come in packages that clearly state they're not effective for transmission of the virus. These same masks only work when they are clean and dry. After two hours of a student wearing a mask, they become damp and ineffective. We all know our kids don't wear the mask correctly as it is, and if they're wearing masks that are damp after two or three hours, they're not serving any purpose. Think back to when we all found out a month or two ago that we didn't have to wear masks anymore. Remember how wonderful it was to smile at people and see them smile back at you? We felt normal again. We need to make school normal again so kids can smile and learn and interact. We all want our kids to be safe. Making them wear masks is not the safe solution. Thank you.
I don't want to say this last name. Yari? I don't want to say your last name, I'm sorry. You can say it for us and maybe spell it too for the record.
Okay. My name is Yari Brkowsky. I have two daughters. They're attending Westfield Public Schools. I reside in 451 Faly Drive. My, I'm also a husband of an RN in Bay State as well. And just, you know, ditto with all the, everything that has been said. I just want to bring up 4.2 million kids have been tested positive for COVID-19. Only .008 have died. 480 children died from influenza in 2019, 2020. As we can see, influenza is more dangerous than COVID-19. There's no harm to our children. I think it should be optional. I respect people that want to wear a mask. We, my wife, as she sees it personally, that there's no high risk to children. And with the masks, I mean, they don't help much, especially with the cloth. I mean, we have to go to N95 if we're going to gain any effect of this. And that's all I want to say, so I vote for optional. Thank you.
Gillian Lenten? Lenty, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Gillian Lentini. I reside on 6 Sabrina Brook Lane, and I have a daughter entering eighth grade. I've been thinking about this for a few weeks now, waiting for this to come up. If you go on social media, literally everyone is screaming, angry, trying to make their point to this study, that study, this doctor, that doctor. I am not going to come with you with studies and what will work and what won't work because people generally make up their own minds, and you will find a study to support it. I'm in the health space. I teach nutrition, and I can find a study to support plant-based, and I can find studies against it. So, you're going to find studies to support your belief system. That being said, I thought about coming up here and drawing parallels to World War II. I have firsthand stories from my grandparents who survived actual slavery in Poland during World War II. A lot of this is political. Or about the downsides to the masks from the added stress, to the bacteria in mask mouths, to the need to expel our waste and not keep re-breathing it. I can point you to doctor after doctor, basically opposed to using them, but again, you can also find the reverse. I'm tired of the angry fighting, the name-calling, basically people saying if you're unvaxxed and unmasked, you're killing grandma. I'm not here to convince you whether or not they work. I can show you just, you can find studies to prove that point. Instead, I'm going to make two points. One is we have unintended consequences. Every action, everything has a reaction. We are hurting our children and our teachers, actually asking them to mask up regardless of vaccine status, breathing in their own filth for eight hours a day. We're over-sanitizing them, and we're creating weaker immune systems. So eventually, when, we're basically putting off cold and flu season. So the further we try to put it off and we over-sanitize them, children aren't going to be able to fight a common cold. They don't have an immune system, which is why we are seeing an uptick in RSV right now. Look at any hospital data. Kids are getting really sick right now, and I think it's because we're over-sanitizing them, completely wiping them clean of any germs, which kids are going to get sick. My kid had spine flu. She had the Delta variant. She's never been hospitalized. She's never been antibiotics other than at birth. Second, my second point, I don't co-parent with teachers or the government. Have you ever called Mr. Humison and said, "Hey, I have a rash. I have high blood pressure. What do I do?" No, that's not who we look to for our health. We look to our doctors. We look to medical professionals. People come to me when they need to fix their diets. So, I, the parents are bearing the cost of their children. My daughter struggled last year in a mask because it was her first year, brand-new school, switching to the public school system. Very hard to meet friends and be social and be a kid when you already have all of the social pressures of being a teenager. We all, most of us here have dealt with the teenage years, and they're not, they're not fun. We have a rise in obesity. We have a rise in suicides in kids. We have a rise in unhealthy habits. We took away their exercise. We took away their outlets, and now we're adding stress and masks. If you ask almost any kid, except for the ones that are just petrified in fear, they don't want to wear the mask. And I think it should be the parents' decision because, again, we don't co-parent with anybody but our sense. Thank you very much.
That's the end of the list, but other people can come forward. That's okay.
Want to come up? Please give your name and your address.
How you doing? My name is Barry Sinek. I live at 75 Crescent Circle. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after listening to everybody, I really do feel it's up to the parents and let us decide and let our kids decide and talk with them. You trust us enough to have our kids at home and do everything right and have them there. The thing with masks, it's probably opinionated and a lot of show, and I only came up to here to talk tonight because I noticed one member on the board with the mask not on properly before we got here, and two members who didn't have the mask on until the meeting started and the camera come on. So are you saying the masks work now that they're on, or you're saying the masks don't? You didn't have them on beforehand. You put them on when the cameras came on, just like if you watch the news, you see Dr. Fauci do the same thing. You see other people do the same thing. So they either work or they don't. So, there's no guarantee in life. Anybody can get injured at any time. You have to live our lives, make or make a right decision. That's all I'm saying. I only came up because I saw the mask off and then on when the cameras came on. I don't think that's cool. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a nice day.
Oh, please, come right up, yes.
My name is Alina Gert at 21 Ryder Road, Westfield, Massachusetts. I had a longer thing prepared, but a lot of people touched on the points that I have written down, so I won't touch upon those. But I have taught in school in Long Meadow in the past year, and I have seen kindergarteners come in with a mask on, and by 10:00 AM, the mask is wet. They're breathing in their own spit. If they have a runny nose, they don't get it to take it off and wipe their nose, maybe put a clean mask on. It's just disgusting, and the teachers have so much on their hands, they won't come up to every kid and tell them to, you know, take off your mask, put a new one on, do you have a new one in your backpack? So these kids are sitting there all day from 10:00 with a wet mask until 3:00, and they're just breathing in this bacteria breeding ground. It's just, you know, really uncomfortable just looking at it. And also, I know Westfield has a large, sorry, I'm pregnant, so I'm not, I don't have enough air. But I know Westfield Public Schools have a large English language learner population. And I've taught English as a second language online and in schools as well. And the number one thing that children look at when they're learning a second language is the mouth, like they stare. I was a second English language learner. I immigrated here at age four. But the number one thing you look out at is the mouth. You look at the movement, the lips. You look at your suit, your other friends, and see what they're trying to say just by looking at their lips. And if ESL learner is in a classroom full of kids masked up, that would really slow down. That would, the ELL learners of Westfield would be disproportionately affected, like they would be a lot behind because they just can't see the lips moving. So the masks aren't there to keep the children safe because we had a child testify that he was mildly sick for three days. It's not there to protect the teachers because the teachers can go get vaccinated if they choose to. So it's really just a symbolic security blanket, like, oh, this is what Westfield is doing, so we look good. This is our political security blanket, just to make things look safe. So I support the parents' right to choose. Thank you.
Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name is Beth Stanton, and I'm a parent of a Westfield elementary student. So first off, I just wanted to address the survey that was sent out.
Can we have your address, please?
Name and address.
Your address, please.
Address is 46 Tucky Drive, Westfield. So the overall decision for, that came out of the survey, I just want to point out that I think it should be taken as advisory, but not necessarily true fact because there were numerous things that lack any control that were put in place to ensure the accuracy of the results. So I know for a fact that numerous parents who no longer have children attending a Westfield school received the survey. I also noticed that anyone who received the survey could take the survey as many times as they wanted without any rejection. So there could be numerous duplicate answers from the same one party. As well as I noticed that they could forward it to anybody else, whether or not that person had a child within the school, and that person could take the survey and skew the results. So I just want to be clear that, and I implore you, that in future surveys, we put in some quality assurance type of things to do. That's what I do for a living, clearly, so I looked at all that to ensure that we get accurate results to better speak for what the public is looking to do or what they would like. So secondly, children in the youngest grades that do not have the same maturity as older children, I just want to talk about, they don't have the same maturity to practice social distancing or to practice good hygiene. And by good hygiene, I mean things like wiping their nose or their mouth and then not putting their fingers everywhere or using a tissue or a napkin instead of using their hands. Maybe putting their hands up their nose is also probably a constant reminder for any parent that has young children. So with that, I just am saying, you know, probably the masks help to prevent some of that constant hands all over their face and touching probably inappropriate things and spreading the germs. And some of the other points that I had have sort of been brought up that, yes, you can find facts anywhere you want to support any type of decision. But as a parent, I wanted to just bring up that I often have to make hard decision as a parent to do what's best for the larger good. Maybe not a decision that my child loves, but if you have a child that is super sick and has to go to Boston Children's Hospital on the regular, you hope that the larger community is helping to protect your child that might bring something home to your sick child. Excuse me. So as school administrators, I would think and I hope that you make a decision that maybe doesn't give you resounding applause from everybody, but does the best to protect those that are the weakest. Thank you.
I have a friend who's on the other side of this situation.
Hold on, hold on just a moment, please. You've already testified. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak? Come, come right up. We have to offer a chance to people who haven't spoken first.
My name is Sophia Lentini. I live at 6 Sabrina Brook Lane. I'm going into eighth grade this year at Westfield Middle School, and social distancing is terrible, first of all. Because I'm a kid. We need contact with other kids. And I got teachers yelling at me, six feet apart, six feet apart, and no kid wants to hear that. That's the worst thing we hear, and it just makes us want to rebel even further away. Secondly, with the mask, I don't, I want to see my friends' faces. I want to see them laugh. I want to see them smile. And when you take that away, like, you feel depressed. You feel blah. So I just want to see my friends' faces. Thank you.
Please give your name and address.
Hi, so I, my name is Rebecca Kadelka. I own a home at 7 Connor Avenue. How do I follow a woman who actually has a child who's going through what she's going through? I can't. But what I can tell you is that my son had bilateral pneumonia from COVID at the beginning of this disease. They actually had to go back and check afterwards. At the time, Franklin House School was down almost 40% of their attendance. Not, it has nothing to do with custodians. You can work as hard as you want to try to keep a school clean. My mother is an administrator in West Springfield. She's in her last year after 37 years of teaching. She's good people. I've sat with her through all of this from both sides. Nobody has an answer to fix this, but it hasn't gone away. We all want to take the masks off. We all want kids to feel normal. The only way we're going to do that is to take the anxiety away. The only way to do that is to not have a woman walk out crying. We need to be a community together, together. I want you all to go to school and be happy. I'm going back to school to be a teacher because of this. We can't do that until this is done. When we politicize it, we don't fix it as a community.
I'm sorry. You have to speak in the microphone. Nobody else can hear you.
Sorry, I just want to talk to, that's where my heart is at. I mean, I literally just went back to Westfield State to do this, to become a teacher on the ground level, to get this done. We have to work as a team. The only way we can do it is to say, okay, we can't, don't do a full mandate forever. No, that's not what anybody wants. But until we see what Delta does, maybe that's not a bad idea. Maybe we wait every 28 days and have a meeting. I think you guys did that sort of last time, right? And it worked fairly well. I don't think there were too many people outraged. Yes, are they uncomfortable? Yeah, they're hot. They're sweaty. Yes, kids spit in them, but they also, I worked in the schools. They take them off. They air-dry them for their mask breaks. Kids are resilient. We can make our lives so much easier by getting along and just supporting our kids. Oh, and Kristen Mello's data. So that's not everybody's data. That's our data as a city. I stared at it yesterday, and I noticed that our problem, the people who haven't been vaccinated, the biggest hole is the younger population because we were told, me included, that it wasn't as dangerous for us, right? So we held back a little bit. We watched what happened with the vaccine. That's where our 12 and under kids are. That's where the kids can't be protected by a vaccine right now. I disagree, but that's, that's, again, everybody has their own position.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And that was yours?
No.
Okay, who else is there?
I think we have time for one more person, and then our 30 minutes is up. Sure? Come right up and please give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Aaron.
Hi, my name is Aaron Diaz. I live at 63 Robinson Drive. And just to touch on her point, this is not about the vaccine. We're talking about masks right now. That's a whole separate issue. I agree with the, that the vaccine doesn't work. Like I said, that's a whole other issue. But we need to understand that the data showed, and even Fauci said himself, the masks don't work. The cloth mask, those little dinky things on your face, the COVID virus goes right through it. I work in a hospital. I have to wear a respirator all day, eight hours a day. I feel like it's having an effect on my health, but I have to do it to protect the community. Children, on the other hand, have resilient immune systems. My two girls were sick last week. I didn't freak out. They got a fever, you give them some Tylenol, you give them some fluids, you let them rest. When they start to feel better, you get them out to play. They're kids. That's what kids do. You go to school, okay? You get a little bug, you come home, you take care of them. That's what parents do. Now, as far as masks go, I don't think that the masks work or protect or do anything except cause anxiety to these kids. Gets in the way of their education. I mean, we all said it, I think we're all in unison, right? That the masks don't work. Let's just, we have to get rid of them. Enough is enough. That's all I got to say.
May I, can I just?
No, I'm sorry, but our 30 minutes is up for public speak. I'd like to invite people who still have comments, though, to please reach out and email the superintendent's office or any member of the school committee. We're still open to hear your comments throughout, you know, this week and into the future. This issue's not going away and we're going to have to deal with it. So please feel free to reach out and contact us. And thank you to the people who were able to testify tonight. You're welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
May I ask, what is the decision we're making for the school year?
We're making it tonight. It's on the agenda.
And then most likely we'll be revisiting it almost every meeting that we have.
Yeah, we did last year.
Mr. Vice Chair, do we need a motion to take?
We do, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to move item number seven, approval memorandum of agreement with Westfield Education Association Unit A Teachers up to number three.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Hang on a second. I forgot.
We have Attorney Dupre here who is going to provide some insight about the MOA.
Good. Let's take a roll call of the motion and then we'll hear from him. Don't need any more because of COVID. All right, all in favor of that motion to move seven to now, say aye?
Aye.
Nay? Okay, motion passes.
Attorney Dupre?
Come right up. The floor is yours.
Hello, everybody. Russ Dupre. So we had some communication from the Mass Teachers Retirement System indicating that there was an issue with using, so I guess what you've done for years is you've used memorandums of agreement with a teacher's contract. So you have a full teacher's contract and then over the years you've been doing settlements, but they haven't been incorporated into the contracts. So Paula and I and Central Office have been working on actually incorporating those MOAs into the contracts. So what you need and what we need to do this week, in my recommendation, the reason I'm here tonight, is instead of doing an MOA, which is what MTRS asked you to do, I've emailed them and said, what I'd like to do is do a one-year contract for 2019-20 and another contract for 2023, that three-year period, and just incorporate all the MOAs into those documents. So that way you'll have just a single document that you can refer to and the teachers' union can refer to, and that's the way I do it everywhere else. I think it's a much more efficient system and then you wouldn't have issues with MTRS in the future. Because they don't want a whole series of MOAs and trying to figure out what people were paid and how much counts towards retirement. So they're demanding that you do something and my recommendation is instead of doing the MOA, that we finalize those contracts, which are, I'd say they're 99% done. I think they'll be done tomorrow. We'll get those to the union and then sometime this week, if we can get the mayor to sign off or sign those contracts, then we can get those to MTRS and I think we can get rid of the issue that's currently pending. The other thing I'll add is you don't need to vote on the contract. You've already voted on the settlement and the settlement said you'd have a one-year contract and a three-year contract. So that's all done. All I need to do is get the contracts done between Paula and my administrative assistant and then we'll get it to the mayor for signature, we'll get it to the union for signature. The union still needs to review everything, but they've already seen the settlement. They know what the other contracts looked like in the MOAs. So it's really just a matter of incorporating everything together. Going forward, what I'll do is I want from now on a settlement agreement and then immediately the contract gets incorporated so that when you get a settlement to vote on, there's going to be an associated contract and you just sign off and hopefully in the same meeting. So you shouldn't ever have that issue again. But, so my recommendation would be, we don't need the MOA tonight. What we need is to get a contract signed this week. Because they gave us one more week to get this done. You have any questions about any of that?
So are we, are we authorizing the mayor to sign on our behalf? Is that needed?
So your, your settlement agreement that you signed, you know, it was about two years ago, actually, authorized the contract to be completed. It's automatic that after a settlement's done, you would have the contracts written up. But I think what happened is they were tracked, they were changed, the MOAs were all looked at, but then it just never got, the parties never got together to actually finalize it. So it needs to be finalized. So you don't need a separate vote on the contract itself. What I would say is it's everything in the settlement agreement that you already signed off on and it's prior MOAs that you also voted on and signed over the years. So everything's going to be put together. It's going to be one document. It just needs to be signed. And it certainly can go out to all of you so you can review it, but it doesn't, it doesn't need another vote.
But the, the teachers are all on board on this, too? They've, they've approved it or do we have to wait for them to vote on it?
They've, they've signed the settlement agreement and voted on the settlement agreement. They're being paid under that agreement. So, and that's part of the problem is MTRS is saying, well, they're being paid under this agreement, but there's no associated contract. There should have been a contract. Because you actually have an MOA on some stipends that increased, but they're not in the contract. So I'm going to put them all in the contract and that way we can just send it to them. And I've already told MTRS that, I told the union that. The, your representative, Paul Ryan, I believe he was on vacation last week for the union. So he just got back, I believe, today. So I haven't actually spoken with him directly. I left him a message. I emailed him. I'm sure he won't have a problem with it because he prefers contracts just like I do.
Sounds a lot cleaner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds easier to read.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
We'll go back to item number three on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. Mayor, before you do that, it's, Stefan, this is on the agenda. Do we need to do anything with it? Do we need to table it? Do we need to?
So do you need to table the MOA?
I don't know if there was a vote that was going to come for number seven, so if it's there, we need to table. Yeah, you're right. Take them out of order, but let's see if we need to vote.
Originally, that's what MTRS said that we had needed when we had to get the agenda out. And then when we talked to them again on Friday, Russell had a better solution.
Well, what would the vote be to do? Are we, we're not approving, we don't need to approve the action itself.
Yeah, we discussed the item. Yeah, so I don't think we need to table it.
We don't have to vote on every item.
Yeah, because we're not, actually not taking a vote on it because he said alls you have to do is you sign it.
Yeah, so I think we're good.
What's that? Couldn't hear that.
No, I was just, do you mean you have to vote to authorize it? We don't.
I think that was already done for the mayor two years ago, yeah.
Right.
Any other points? Any other questions? All right, item number three.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular school committee, committee meeting minutes of July 19th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any changes or corrections to this? Yeah, I, I think on, I didn't print this one out, so I'm doing this off memory, but items number six and item number eight, they actually had, I was absent from the meeting. They had me voting and Cindy is absent, so I think both of those need to be switched. Cindy actually voted and I did not.
Oh, yeah, it's number six.
Six and eight, I think it is. Actually, and I think under number eight, Cindy is actually listed twice and Heather's not listed. So one of those, one of those needs to go to Heather. So there's some corrections on the votes? There's a couple. Just, it's just, yeah. Fortunately, just because I wasn't here, so. Cindy, how do you, how do you prefer to change that? Do you just need to talk to members or? Because we're just making corrections.
I'll make some of the minutes and put them out correctly for dying and please to sign them.
Okay. Any more corrections or changes to this?
We need to make a, we should have accepted it as revised. Yeah.
Seeing none?
Well, we need to make a motion to accept it as revised.
The change, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the regular school committee meeting minutes of July 19th, 2021 as revised.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second to accept the minutes as revised. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? I will abstain. Motion passes.
We're going to have to change it again, Mr. Trump. What do you want to do that?
Item number four. Policy, reviewing of the face covering requirements for the start of the 20, 2021, 2022 school year. Superintendent?
So our current policy, which was passed August 26th, 2020, we had a first reading on August 17th, reads, "A face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds and on school transportation. Exempted from this policy are students requiring a medical or safety exemption as determined by the building principal in accordance with the district face covering policy." I also sent out a face covering policy for the Mass Association of School Committees, a sample of what they are recommending, which encourages this policy to essentially remain in place. I, I want to talk about a couple of things and I will, in terms of the survey, it was, our intent was to get a feel. It wasn't scientifically intended. It was anonymous. To get it, we would have had the people register with their email. And that wasn't what we were trying to do. We were just trying to get a dipstick of what the community was feeling. So I do want to explain that. We had 5,745 responses, which is more than we have in the school district in terms of students, but not parents. So it's not like we got 20,000 responses. And again, this data isn't even necessarily intended to influence a decision one way or another. It's informational. And I have other informational, information to provide, too. So in terms of, from the survey results from the parents, 48.5% indicated that they preferred option two, which is pre-K to 12 masks are required for all students and staff in school buildings regardless of vaccination status. 38.6% of parents that responded, again, or people that responded in the parent column, indicated that they were for option three, which is masks would be optional. And then 12.9% of the parents followed the state's recommendation, which is masks pre-K to six and then seven to 12, don't have to wear masks if they show vaccination. For the students, there were 1,304 student responses. 46.8% of them wanted, indicated option two, which is that pre-K to 12 masks are required for all students regardless of vaccination. 42.5% chose option three, which is masks are optional. And then 10.7% selected pre-K to six masks, seven to 12, no masks if you're vaccinated. And then finally, the staff, we had 916 responses, which, and then we had 39.6% vote for option two, which is pre-K to 12 masks are required for all students and staff in school buildings regardless of vaccination. And then option three, which is masks are voluntary, was 31.8%. And then 28.6% of, wanted option one, again, which is the pre-K to six masks and seven to 12, no masks if you're vaccinated. I also sent the survey to our administrative team. Because I think that's an important perspective is we will have to be the ones that would enforce this in the schools. And it's a question you typically ask, so I wanted to get ready for that. But 50% of the administrative team were option two, which is masks for everyone. 26.7% were option one, pre-K to six, all students wearing masks and seven to 12, don't have to wear a mask if you're vaccinated. And 23.3% were option three, which is masks are optional. Other information that I researched, and I wasn't trying to get into the science piece at all because I'm not a physician or nor do I pretend to be.
Stefan, would you mind speaking into the microphone a little bit better?
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize it wasn't catching me.
Captured for the folks at home.
What we know is that, oh boy, where'd that paper go? It's just, it is the vaccination rates for our, I believe, 12 to 15 and then 15 to 17 was 39% and then 34%. So our, the age range of folks that could be vaccinated is averaging at about 37% in the city. And I'm not sure of the vaccination rate in the city, but last night, I think it was below 50%. So things that we have to consider and why, as we bring this up, and I appreciate everyone's comments and feedback, things that we have to look at is keeping our schools open as, as long and as much as possible. And I think that that is the biggest consideration because the state has not given us any other option other than to be open five days a week and in person. So our concern, too, is absenteeism for people who do get sick. And really, if you are out and you're out for any period of time, it obviously affects your education. And if we have to close a classroom or close any portion of a building, it's going to affect education. And what we, what we know is that the state has given us no alternatives. So for example, last year we had an option. So if there was an outbreak in a classroom and several people were sick, we had the option of taking that classroom with the teacher and making it remote so that learning can continue. The state is not allowing that option this year. So those students, and that's nothing that we have control over. What the state is saying is that those people are technically absent and would have to do makeup work as typical. Not, they would not have the opportunity to even get remote instruction at that point. And even if we tried to offer it, it wouldn't count towards time on learning, so it would be days that would have to be made up at the end of the year. So that, for us, that's a big consideration. I think, you know, at this point, we haven't seen any mask mandate on the state level. We see this is hugely political. You are all absolutely correct. And I can tell you that there's no one sitting up here that wants any part of this politics piece. Our biggest concern is the safety of our kids, but also the safety of our staff. And if our staff are getting sick, this is the other part, and many of you probably experienced that. On our agenda later is to try to raise the pay for substitute teachers because we don't have a large pool of substitute teachers. We are suffering from the same employment or non, we don't have the workers like everybody else. So, you know, we're going to try to raise the pay to lure more people here, but it doesn't necessarily work for that. So finding teachers to cover our classes last year was an incredible challenge. And I don't expect it to be any easier this year, although we are certainly trying to recruit. But we can't even fill positions that we have posted for regular teachers and paraprofessionals, never mind the substitutes. So what I don't want to do to any of our kids and say, okay, so you have to be home for this. You've missed that much of an educational, I mean, that is also a huge concern. If you lose 10 days of instruction, and I know some reference the Technical Academy. If you miss 10 days of instruction at the Technical Academy, it is almost impossible to catch up on that instruction that's being lost. So how do we keep our schools open the most, keep our kids safe, keep our staff safe? Our next agenda item is going to talk a little bit more about that, too, and what the state is recommending and what we want to talk about. But I hope people understand and appreciate, we have no interest in trying to make our kids suffer. That's not our purpose, but we do want them to be able to be in school educated by professional teachers every day because that is the, that's where you get the biggest bang for your buck for education.
I apologize. The meeting is for members. Thank you. Meeting for members. The members can now ask questions if they like. The folks in the gallery, certainly welcome to watch. I need to enforce the rules and the rules say you have to sit quietly. Sorry, John. Questions for members? Tim?
Stefan, is the state, you know, with your interactions with the state in the Board of Education, you think there's, at any point, they're going to look at that attendance policy and, and change it or modify it or allow?
We've received no indication of that and I'm telling you, superintendents across the Commonwealth are so frustrated with this because the other piece is this, all right, yes, it's an excused absence. We excuse the absence. The state does not. Therefore, when this, when the district as a whole gets evaluated by the state, if we have students that are out 10, 20, 30 days, that are out 10, 20, 30 days, the state holds that against districts in terms of accountability. The biggest frustrating part about that is that we have no control over this virus, we have no control of what's going to happen. I can't, listen, no one wanted to be here. This was supposed to be a start to a regular school year. This, right? We talked about that when we were in June, we were like, oh, it's going to be so great to have everybody back. I mean, as the summer progresses and I'm seeing these numbers, I'm like, what the heck is going on? And, and, but it's, it's, it's just that, you know, but the attendance is just one piece. The loss of education for our kids is huge. Last year, I mean, we're, we are expanding our pathways program, which is our credit recovery program for high school kids, because we had a lot of kids fall behind. And we, and we need to catch them up. And I don't want to use that expression, but we need to give them the information that they need to be successful people. And, you know, that's, as anxious and passionate as you folks are about what the words that you said to us, I am that passionate and so is the committee about educating our kids and making sure that they get to physically be in our building, as much, buildings as much as possible, because we recognized the negative of remote learning, even the hybrid piece, we recognize all of that. I think that it's just important, I wish I had the best answer. I don't, we don't, and I think we all struggle with what's, what's best to do here, but I also don't want to penalize our kid with an attendance policy that the state is just not flexing on.
Heather?
And I applaud you for what you're saying, because I think what's important is no one wants to be here and in making this decision. And I applaud everybody who came in and spoke, because I think it takes courage to do that. It's the reason I became, that I started running, because I took in a student from an elementary school when I was teaching in there, I was a para, and ended up taking in that student, and I've had that student now for seven years, and he has a lot of different issues that we, we work on. And I decided to come back to the school committee and run, because I wanted to be a part of making some of the decisions that go on in our schools. I understand that this feels political, because everybody has one side or the other. I, no one is going to leave this happy. I just, no one's going to get what they want out of this. And what I do encourage, and what I do, I just want everybody to understand that, you know, some of you came up and you were very angry, you know, and you're coming across angry, and it, and I get it, you're passionate, and I get that way too. But we have to remember that no matter what, we have, we are the models for our students and our kids and our neighbors, and we need to be modeled the behavior that sometimes things don't go our way, but we're not going to go after people or do things that sound so, I don't know, it sounds so angry, and, and, you know, I heard somebody's language in the, you know, this is bull and all that, it's like, I'm sorry. None of us are doctors, and we're all doing the best we can. And, you know, when I go to Second Opinion in Boston, they made me wear a mask. I, and what am I going to do, tell that doctor he's wrong? I can't. He wore one, I wore one. But I'm just saying, we need to treat people, each other with respect, whether we agree with each other or not, because we need to model that behavior so that our kids go to school and do the same thing. Because we need to teach them that we don't always get our way, but we're going to be able to, be able to get along with each other. So making, you know, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments?
It's too bad.
Cindy?
So thank you all for coming tonight, I think it's really important, but I can tell you for as many people who are sitting here, our emails that I've received and answered on the other side of the coin. So just because people didn't come out and say that they support masks, doesn't mean that there's not a huge number of people that believe that. I have vossulated yes, no. First of all, I'll agree that I don't think the school committee should be making this decision, period. There's a lot of decisions that have been made in the last 18 months that I don't think school committees should be making when it comes to this virus. I said it last year when we were talking about sports, we were talking about should WTA go back in before everybody else? We've dissected every part of education that we possibly can, and honestly, if I, we were to vote right now, I don't know, because I agree and disagree with every single point. I'm upset with the state that they're not being more clear about what needs to be done. Desi is our, is our guide, and they're not giving us any guidance, and I think that that is a shame. I'm not for government control either, but a little bit of help from people who run to be on the school committee to help students and their education and administrators, that we have to make these decisions and we become vilified or heroes, is a terrible position for us to be in. We're just people trying to make the right decision. And I can talk about that all night, but I'm not going to, my soapbox will be very limited tonight. But the point that Stefan made is we want to keep kids in school. And I don't like seat belts in cars either, but do they save every life? No, they don't. But I put them on and my kids have to wear them, and so I don't know. So that's the point about wearing masks. And then I hear, like, people get sick from wearing masks, I hear that too. We hear all of that, so don't think that we already made a decision. I certainly thought I did, and then I hear everybody and I haven't. I did get some emails from some business owners in town that were advocating for masks, and I'm not going to call them out, but there was three or four emails from business owners asking us to support masks, because when kids are out of school, then their staff is out of work and they can't open. So I thought that was a different side of the story. So, I don't know, I guess we have to vote on it. Nobody here wants to vote on this issue. We don't. I, I'm not going to raise my hand and go, please let me vote on masks so that half the city can be mad at me and half the city can, can like me. So I can lose friends or gain friends. It's not, it's not about that for me. No decision has ever been about that for me. But I think we do have to be really careful. I worry about bullying in school. If we were to do, you know, if you're vaccinated, then you don't have to wear a mask, if you're not vaccinated, whatever, I worry about that. I don't want kids to be bullied in school, and we all know bullying happens. We'd be burying our heads in the sand if we thought that bullying didn't happen. So, I don't know, somebody else can talk, because I don't know how to address any of that, or how to make everybody happy, or how to wave the magic wand and make COVID go away. I just, I really am struggling, and I know everybody else is too.
Let me ask Ray to speak next, and then Stefan.
I know.
Everyone doesn't have to get, they can't get a vaccination, right? And from that point on, then it's, it's personal choice. I was, I was way on board with that. They came back with another, now they want everybody to get masks. One of the things we learned from our lawyers is, if we get sued and we don't institute the guidelines that have been given to us by Destiny, we're more at risk for lawsuits. Now, how does that affect kids? Next year's budget, if we get sued and they can win, that affects the learning that all the kids are going to get from that point forward. I think this sucks, I think that the, that the state should have come with some real hard facts and say, this is what it is, I'm not a doctor and I didn't sleep at Holiday Inn Express last night. So I can't, I really have no business doing that, but I do know what the, what the lawyers have given us for guidance. The guidance that they've given us to this point is that we should follow the guidance that's given to us. It's not a mandate, it's a guidance from up above, but if we don't follow it, we're open to lawsuits. And it's already happened in Oklahoma. So I know that that sucks, but that's, I mean, that's it, that's, this drives me crazy that we even have to have this conversation at this level. I'm not a doctor, I shouldn't have to be, telling folks what they should or shouldn't wear masks.
Thank you. Stefan?
So just a couple of things too, and one is that by federal law, students on public transportation, which includes school buses, have to wear masks. That isn't anything that we have control over, that has come down from the federal government. I don't love masks either, and to the point, even today, I have a cough and a sniffles, and I didn't want to, in case it is, well, who knows? You know, so I'm wearing it almost to protect others more than myself. So if, you know, I think there is that personal choice piece, but at the same time, when you look at one of the options, it was that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. You know, as I was always taught, is don't put a rule into place that you can't enforce. And, you know, how do we determine? Staff would be one thing, but students might be another. And I don't know how to identify anyone grade seven through 12 has been vaccinated and doesn't have to wear a mask. And again, there, it goes to Cindy's point about, you know, how do, you know, I remember reading the Scarlet Letter, right? You had the A, do you have to wear a V if you're vaccinated? I don't know. There's a, there's a piece there, and trying to take, there is so much to this, this is probably more complex than any of, that's, again, we're not medical people, and so I think that that's part of the concern. I know that the mayor and I had an extensive conversation today with our Director of Public Health, Joe Rouse, and mayor, I don't know if I want to go to, you want to take that over, or you want me to?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd be happy to talk about that for a minute.
Sure.
And I want to wait until everybody had a chance to speak, and then sort of echo some of the comments from some of the other members. The superintendent referenced his meetings with superintendents across the state. I also meet mainly on Zoom with mayors and members of the Mass Mayor Association and the Mass Municipal Association. And we are all frustrated, because pretty much none of us are healthcare professionals. And yet, we've been put into a position where we're asked to make healthcare decisions, and not just for ourselves and our staffs here at City Hall or across the city, but also in schools, and our public employees, as well as your children and our children. And I'm a father as well, I have a 10-year-old who's entering fifth grade this year. And I especially want to thank the two students who testified. That's never easy to come and talk to a group of adults, but we really appreciate you speaking, especially and all of you for raising your, your points, pro or con. I'm one of those people that believe that people of goodwill can, can disagree and still do it respectfully. Sometimes we get hot, we get passionate, especially if you've watched any of these school committee meetings, you know, we do that among ourselves. So we as non-professionals, as laymen, often have to rely on the professionals. The superintendent and I had a conversation again today, as I'm sure we will have many of in the future, and we've had many in the past, with Joe Rouse. Joe is the head of the Department of Public Health for the City of Westfield, and when I became mayor about a year and a half ago, I made the decision that since he was the professional and I was not, I would follow Joe's guidance and the Board of Public Health's guidance when it came to health decisions in our schools. And Joe is not able to be here tonight, but he has been at many of our meetings, again, mostly through Zoom, but I expect he'll be at meetings in the future where he will update the members of the school committee on whatever the guidance is coming out of Boston or out of Washington. That's extremely frustrating for us as well, because that guidance changes all the time. And we get really angry, because one week it's one thing, and two weeks later at our next meeting, it's something else. And then we have to give you as parents and everyone else a set of guidance that changed from what it was after our lengthy debate just two weeks ago. Joe said that if he had his way, he would say to us that we should consider mask, I don't think he used the word mandates, but the mask guidance, and that is, wearing the masks is better than not wearing the masks. I don't know, I heard from all of you, everybody's got an opinion about it. And I wish I knew what truth was, and I think we probably won't know until this is long in our rearview mirror, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, that's so we don't have to deal with COVID ever again, but at some point, we'll look back and say, hey, remember 2021? We did the wrong thing. Or remember 2021? We did the right thing, we were lucky, we got lucky. But honestly, we just don't know. And so unfortunately, as a board, unfortunately, as a mayor, I have to go by the guidance that the Department of Public Health gives me, or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education give us. I don't always agree with it, and I, I wish I knew what was right, or what was truth, but I often have to go with that decision. So I'll echo what the other members of the school committee said, we share your frustration, we know you're angry, you're probably angry with us, we get it. We wish that wasn't the case. We also ask you to stay tuned, because whatever decision we make tonight may very well change in a couple of weeks at our next meeting. And that's going to frustrate nobody more than all of us up here. But, thank you, by the way. Thank you, mayor. I remember about a year ago now, summertime special meeting was called, I was actually on vacation, and a couple of us were on vacation, and we were sitting around at 7:00 at night trying to decide if we were going to open schools. This was after May 13th hit, and then April, we talked about, we're only going to be closed for a couple of weeks, and then May hit, we're going to be closed, we finally decided we're going to be closed through June. Well, I believe it was August 10th of last year that we got together on Zoom to decide if we were even going to open up schools 10 days late, I believe, the state said we could have 10 days, and we went forward. We said yes. Did we just start with the tech academy? Yeah, we did. But we did a tiered-in system to get our students back in school, because there's not a person up here who doesn't believe that students don't learn better when they are in a classroom than instead of in front of a computer screen. I saw it every day, I work at the Boys and Girls Club, I saw 200 kids in there every day. They dealt with a lot of these people on a computer screen and principals, and they didn't want to do that either. So we worked the best we could to make sure that our students were safe and in school. We will not have that absentee policy that we had last year. And that hurts. That's, that's more than just having your, your son or daughter miss 10 days of school. That's bad enough, and that's, that's going to be something that, as a parent of two young, well, adults now, they're out of the public schools, but I would not want to have them home for 10 days, missing 10 days of school, and the school system also being penalized for that. We had conversations about athletics, and there were people that came on, on our Zoom meetings just as passionate as you guys are about this subject. It's great to see, people are involved, and I appreciate that. I appreciate it because you're advocating for your children, and that's what we do. Some of them aren't our kids, my kids are not in the public schools anymore. So I got elected to make sure that the, the school system was run as well as possible for the City of Westfield. And that's what we all do, and those are the votes we take. We don't agree with every vote each other takes. We do talk, sometimes we hang up the phone early in a phone conversation, but there's going to be times, and lots of times, where the public doesn't agree with the votes we take. But that's why we were put in these spots, was to take these tough votes. I'm tired of this. I'm tired of this 16 or 18 months that it's been talking about COVID-19. But in the back of my head, I'm, I'm thinking, okay, we worried about a South African variant, then we worried about this one coming out of India, then we worried about the one coming out of London, now we've got Delta, which is affecting children, by the way, five years old and up. What's next? Well, you can read all the studies you want, I'm seeing, I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, please keep quiet, and I'll have to ask you to leave the chamber. So. Thank you. I, I just worry what's, what's around the corner, and this doesn't end, and we sit here again and have the same conversation. I'm as tired of it as you guys are. I want schools open, I want all the kids back in their classrooms, seeing their teachers, seeing their friends. She's, she's absolutely right, she needs to see her friends. I get it, but I want to make sure she does see her friends. It's going to be an unpopular vote, I know, but I'm, well, whatever vote we have to take to continue this policy is where I'm going to be, because at the end of the day, I need... at the end of the day, I need to feel I did the right thing to keep kids safe. And it's either with a mask or without a mask. And I just can't get my head around where it would be safer to let kids and staff into schools without a mask if it would keep them safer with a mask on. So I get it. It's unpopular in the room. I got the same emails that Mrs. Sullivan got. One of the business owners is a good friend of mine. I didn't ask him for an email, but I read it, and he made some good points. If somebody has to stay home with a sick child, that means they're not going into work. And we don't want to start that again. So I appreciate it. I really do. I hope you do stay engaged. I say this after everything. I said it after all the athletic conversations we had. Stay engaged, because there's bigger issues. This is a mask, but there's going to be whole things about this school system that you're going to disagree with too. There's budgets. So, so, you know what? I got to tell you something. No, I'll answer that one. I didn't, one, I didn't read the survey. Two, I didn't ask Stefan what the results of the survey was. I wanted to hear what it was. I couldn't tell you how many questions were on that survey. It's okay. That's all right. I didn't authorize it. So, but that's okay. I understand why it was put out, because we wanted all these opinions. So anyways, he read the results. The results are there. So if you disagreed with me, that's fine. I can live with that. I need to go home and put my head on the pillow and say that I think I did the right thing. And that's what I'm going to do tonight, is I think I'm doing the right thing.
If I could just ask the members of the committee to direct your comments to the chair and not to members in the audience, and again, ask the audience to please respect the rules of the committee and not offer comments. That would be fine. Let me also interrupt the debate for a moment to ask, what is our next course? Are we required to take a vote? Are we continuing the policy that already exists? What do we need to do?
So I think if the policy that is there, you wouldn't need to vote to change it.
Would you ask to say that again?
There's a policy that's already in place.
Right.
If you want to leave it, and that was passed August 26, 2020. And if you want to leave it, I've read what it says, and it covers pretty much everything that if we were going to have masking. Mayor, can I just add a couple?
Oh, I'm sorry. Get rid of that, Stefan.
What I want to say too is, I'm not saying that we made every bright decision last year. I know that we tried. We talked about it. I will tell you that our district was open more than most around here. Our kids were in school, I mean, more than many area districts. Some of them didn't even open until April. We tried to have our kids in as much as we could. We tried to close schools as little as possible. I know we had the holiday bump, but that was the only extended time that we had to close schools down. Our kids need to be in school in person. I think everyone in this room agrees. And how we get there is where we have our sticking points.
Can I ask a question for the superintendent?
Go ahead.
Could you talk about when there is a positive case, what the protocols are? Because when we're talking about sending kids home, it's not just because they're sick or positive. It's contacts as well, right?
Yes.
And I know that that keeps changing. So again, trying to keep up.
As of right now, and I'm going to dive into the next item. So what the state wants us to do is implement testing. So you could test and stay. So if you test negative, you stay in school, even if you're a close contact. What is absent from the guidance, and someone had reference to social distancing, none of that is being referenced in here. When this was last year, if you recall, and that's, you know, you can only have 20, 20, 21 students on a school bus. We don't have those restrictions this time around. We don't have the restrictions in the cafeteria. You can take your mask off to eat. You can take your mask off if you're outdoors. Those are things last year that weren't necessarily in place. So, but the test and stay, and the state is willing to pay for it. And that's going to be our next presentation. Because I believe that is the best way, I don't love it, but I believe it's the best way to keep the, as many kids in school as we can and staff.
Because I was reading the Department of Public Health information, and I read that if you were vaccinated, you didn't have to quarantine. So it's, and that says about schools. So the problem is, I don't think that we should be asking people if they're vaccinated or not. However, that's what the Department of Public Health is saying. So I'm confused, as a school committee member, about what the heck we're going to be doing.
We're confused as superintendents. And one of the things we know is we're going to retain the segregated area for a suspected COVID patient. We say suspected. It could be a cold. It could be nothing else. It could be allergies, which is, I have those seemingly year-round. So when, if they test negative, they can stay in school.
So that's the, okay, all right.
That's the next, and we're going to present that next.
Because it's just different information. Again, like we've been saying all night, the information changes on a daily basis. You read one document, it says this. You read another document, it says that. And when we're trying to make an informed decision...
It's very difficult.
So Westfield Public Schools, you're going to consider doing testing. If there's a contact...
Well, we need that, we need to vote on.
If, I know. But what I'm saying is, that's a proposal, other than the Department of Public Health, which is saying, if you're vaccinated, you can stay. If you're not, then you have to quarantine.
Right.
Which is very confusing.
It is.
Which means then we would be asking about vaccination status, which is a whole other thing. And here we are.
The state has not made this easy. We have not had any additional guidance in a bit. And it would be nice, one of the things that we found conflicting is whether you agree with the CDC or the Mass DPH, but can they just be on the same page? Because they're not on the same page. So how are, how are school, district, school committees, local government supposed to make a decision, the best decision for our kids, which is what we all want, when the powers that be, if you will, can't get together on the same page?
That's, I think they must do it on purpose, because that way they avoid the situation that we're in.
This has been the most agonizing thing.
And, you know, my mother lives with me. And so I have, you know, I wear my mask and don't wear my mask. It depends where I am. You know.
Same.
You know, but it's a difficult, you know, I don't know what to say, except that they have purposely not had these decisions made to take the pressure off, because like we all just said, none of us want to vote on it. None of us do. I'd rather be voting on curriculum and the different math programs that are coming in and things like that, not this. I hope, you know, that we can talk more about our reading curriculum sometime soon, or maybe what we're doing, our latest new math curriculum is. And hopefully people would come in and be excited about that as well.
Y'all didn't have it? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's hard not to engage the audience here tonight, and I will try very hard not to do that. That is not the intent. I do thank everybody for coming in. It's not an easy issue, and I think you've heard it from my colleagues on the school committee. I think it's safe to say, probably in the last, you know, last year plus, we've been many times trying to make the least worst decision. And that doesn't feel good. And we know that, that it's, all decisions aren't going to end well. But you just try to make the one that's going to have the least difficult impact on students and staff. And we have to, we have to make sure that we remember that while, you know, we're here to talk about masks for students, but also for our staff and administration. And I can tell you, for me, it's always been a number one priority as a member of the school committee to create a safe and healthy learning and teaching environment for all that are involved. And that doesn't change. But it makes it very, very difficult during a time like this. I've probably been on the more conservative side of this committee, which was not a popular vote a lot of times. But I think every member said it in different ways. We're trying to do the best we can with the information that we get. And we understand that information comes in in different ways, in different areas. And on our own, doing research that we think is going to be best for our decision-making. But we do, I'm grateful that at least the kids or the students are going to be in school, the staff's going to be in school to open it up. Safety's our number one priority. And I just think we're going to have to make a difficult vote on whichever way that goes, to how you feel about creating that safe learning and teaching environment.
Any more comments from the committee members?
I think that we should vote formally, so that there is no confusion with the, whether we keep the mask mandate or not. I think it should be a vote on that.
I agree.
Because I think it needs to be clear what our decision is, and not, well, the mask policy stays in place. And then everyone's like, well, what does that mean? Or the mask policy was not left in place. I think we need to have a vote. Not that I want to vote, but I think we have to.
So members should have a copy in their packet of the current policy, which as the superintendent said, was adopted August 26, 2020. Do I hear any motions?
I'd like to make a motion to continue policy filed JICA student dress.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the policy. Any debate?
This, this will just continue what's going on. But as someone said, and I don't know, it may have been the mayor, we meet, I believe, either next Monday, and then we'll meet again the first Monday in September. This could all change. We may take another motion then to discontinue this, because we don't need it anymore. That's the vote we want to take. But for now, we need, I believe we need to continue this policy.
Can somebody highlight what he just...
Do you want me to read the paragraph again?
Bo, if you've got the policy, get ready.
I got it right in front of me. I will just do the masking one, because everything else is what kids wear to school. Okay? "A face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation. Exempted from this policy are students requiring a medical and/or safety exemption as determined by the building principal in accordance with the district face covering policy."
Other comments?
I just, I agree. I think in two weeks, we could be changing it, which is what we did when sports came out. We voted no, and then two weeks later, we were able to open it back up. So, and I would encourage everybody to just stay tuned into what's going on. I mean, like, we have quite a few meetings coming up. And, I mean, no one likes to sit here and get blasted, but I'm encouraging you to come back. You know what I mean? I don't want to have people come up and just, you know, lay it out on me. Like, but I want you to do it. You know, you need to come back and advocate. It's important.
They don't have to talk. We're about outside. Is that a part of what the superintendent said?
Let me ask the superintendent to address some things.
Sure. So the masks do not need to be worn outside. That has been the rule from the state. I do want, because someone brought up athletics, so I do want to talk about that. The MIAA is actually meeting Wednesday. And I know that...
And they could come up with their own policy.
Well, so, and it's, so I was asked last year the question, well, why do we have to follow MIAA rules? And my response is this. Listen, we have phenomenal sports teams here in Westfield. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And Westfield High School, Westfield Technical Academy make the tournaments on a regular basis. Go Westfield, okay? But if we don't follow their rules, we can't play the tournaments. And that, to me, is more disappointing to our kids than the mask piece. I mean, imagine going all the way or being undefeated and being told, well, if you don't wear masks, you can't compete. And that was the situation last year. So I don't know where the MIAA is going to go, but I will be eagerly awaiting, they'll send us an email out on the 19th, and then we'll be getting that information out to the principals. And again, but masks are required on school buses. That is a federal statute.
Any further comments before I call for the roll?
Yes, I have.
Go ahead, Henson.
So I am going to vote yes to keep this policy in place. My reason is, I have known several people who have actually passed away from COVID. I know several people who have gotten very sick from COVID and still continue to have side effects from that. And I feel like, as a school population, we have many children and staff members who have underlying conditions that we cannot control. So if a mask is going to help those students and staff as much as it can, even if it's a small percentage, then I have to, in my heart, vote for it. And if it's going to keep our schools open and keep our kids in school, then I am going to vote yes. And that is why. Again, it's not something that I want to do. But I feel like it's not out of fear. It's out of trying to protect people that can't protect themselves right now. And that is, that is the key for me.
Thanks. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Hope the record shows unanimous. Thank you. Now we can move on to item number five. Routine COVID-19 safety check.
Please, somebody, the studies, the studies that show that the PCR...
Sure, you can take it.
It's actually, they pulled the urgency of PCR testing, which is what they're using to show positive cases.
It's Binance.
What is it?
Binance.
B-I-N-A-N-E-S. No, this is what they use here, though.
Okay. I apologize. The meeting is still in...
And they pulled it.
Taking place, so...
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about it. Let me take this part here.
Next item is item number five. And I think the superintendent, do you have?
Yeah, so, as I alluded earlier, I am going to ask Deb to come up, because she drew the short straw and got to sit through the webinar. Although, we have another one tomorrow that the rest of us are joining. But again, this was offered last year. We brought it to our, at that time, safety committee, and who, Joe Rouse was a member of the safety committee. And we decided against this at that time. But now, knowing that if the test and stay is an option, that if you test negative, folks can stay, it became a little more appealing in that obviously we want as many staff and students in school all the time. So, and actually, that's page seven of the...
Handout?
Handout. Deb, do you want to talk? Go ahead.
Sure. I actually, you have a copy. I know that Stefan had sent one to you already. So the PowerPoint is pretty self-explanatory. So I just have a few of the highlights that I wanted to go over. The Department of Ed had previously, in the spring, piloted onsite COVID testing. And I think it was about 500 schools in the spring for those who volunteered to do it. Through that testing, they found that it was determined to be a key mitigation strategy for keeping kids in school. They partnered with CIC Health and is also associated with the Shaw Foundation. Through a grant, the Department of Ed is recommending and offering free services to all districts and schools involved. It's involving the Binix Now antigen testing. There are three different options that districts can choose. They can choose one, two, or all of them. Basically, what it would be is what we call a test and stay. So if a student or a staff is not feeling well, feels that they may be symptomatic, they would take the test. If it's negative, they move, they go on, and they stay in school. If somebody is considered to be a close contact, they test. If negative, they stay in school, but continue testing for up to at least five days. And there's also what they call routine safety checks, which was previous called pool testing, where they can get samples of the schools to try to determine contacts and kind of what's happening in the school, each individual schools as a whole. With connecting with CIC Health, the services at that is pretty comprehensive. And what they're offering is, they would have the district have a program coordinator that would work with... that would work with the point person in our district or a district to help coordinate everything. They would provide the testing materials, the software, the data program, the testing supplies, the courier services, the shipping. And each school, depending on the size of the school, would have between two to four personnel, medical personnel, qualified personnel who would actually do the testing. One thing they did say was that they encouraged students to self-test. And actually mentioned, along with going to this webinar, I also attended a CIC Health webinar to hear a little bit more from them. And they said that even younger children are very good about a simple swap. But they do have personnel that would go, however the admin in the school would want to set it up, whether they have a trialing, they go to each home room, if they have somebody that checks in the morning, whatever. Tests are for 24 hours turnover. And of course, any student that would be tested would have to have parent consent. We would not be able to do this without parental consent. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, but it's a way to keep kids in school.
And staff, and that's the part, because HR- Paula, actually, was a very big proponent of this as well. I don't think anyone can appreciate the amount of, I'm not sure what the word is, but last year trying to track, Paula having to track the cases with staff and the HR department, and Chris having to, and the principals, by the way, and Chris Rogers having to track all of the cases and report it to the state. I mean, that was almost a full-time job in itself.
So, and again, I brought it to Superintendent Zaporowski's attention because under test and stay, asymptomatic close contacts will have the option to remain in school and be tested daily with the tests for at least five days. So from a staffing perspective, being able to keep staff in the schools who are considered close contacts but are asymptomatic is, is a victory if we're trying to keep our students in front of teachers. Because the substitution, as Superintendent Zaporowski already alluded to, is bleak at best. So I would encourage consideration of this, just because they have changed the rules yet again. And who knows what will happen next month. But that's the current policy of DESI and DPH.
And one more thing I wanted to add, like I said, there was no cost to the district. And also, one of the questions that was brought up to CIC Health in the webinar is-
Would you mind speaking into the microphone?
One of the things that was brought up with the CIC webinar is because we need parental consent, what if only 20%, say, of parents consent? And what they found in their spring testing with the schools, that even a lower percent of parental consent is still effective. Obviously, not as effective as 80 or 90, but it's still worth the effort, is what they were saying. So I did, I did want to mention that.
Can you answer, what is the nature of the testing? It's not the way up the nose?
No, just the nasal swab, where the kids can do their- And then obviously, they would have their personnel that for children who couldn't, whether it's children with disabilities or children that are just a little nervous or whatever, they would administer the test if need be, but try to encourage independence with monitoring as best they can to make it as invasive as possible.
I'm sorry, maybe you said, is it the school nurse who's there?
No, they would have their own people come in and do it. So that was one of my concerns supervising the nurses, saying, oh, my gosh, you know, this is an extra. But that doesn't seem to be the case.
Quick, thank you. Tim?
So, will there be representatives at each school? And they stay there during the entire-
They go in, they do the testing, they carry the materials, they do the shipping, they come down.
And so we still have the COVID rooms set up, right? So I'm imagining the events will take place in there, or the testing, or is it?
Well, I think with the safety checks, which was formerly the pool checking, testing, I think they would just do that sort of like as a check-in when the kids come in in the morning. But for students or staff who are symptomatic, I'm sure they would make use of those rooms.
So with the close contact, that, that happens immediately, that testing is going to happen immediately? Where do those students go to after they, after they get the test? I know the results come back relatively quick, but-
They come back within 24 hours, so they want to be considered-
As, as long as they're asymptomatic.
Right.
Because we're part of the pool, staff as well as students could remain in the school. As long as they're asymptomatic or testing, then they can, that's the test instead.
And that's, right, right. And they said the turnover is at the most 24 hours. And that they, one question was, how many tests can you do in a day? And they say they do up to 100 a day.
Well, with that testing cycle, whether or not, you know, if you think masks are a barrier for transmission, then with having asymptomatic students potentially in very close contact, that you're just going to need, you're going to need more help trying to contain it, spread.
Ray?
Yeah. Do a question, some. What is about the staff? Do we need to, certainly, do we need to negotiate this with the staff? Or is this something that-
Yes, so if we had a vote, I would need to be at the table negotiating with all units.
Okay. The second question is, say they refuse the test, whether it's staff or student, what happens then?
Then they go back to what we've done previously in quarantine.
And they go home and quarantine?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
The exception would be if you're vaccinated and you're deemed to be a close contact, you're not required to quarantine.
Thank you. Yeah, as of today.
As of today.
Right.
Wait, can you say that again?
Right now, if you are vaccinated and you are deemed to be a close contact, you do not need to quarantine.
Right, that's what I was asking you earlier, which changes on a regular basis.
Yes, it does.
The Department of Ed has, of course, given us a deadline to apply by August 20th if the district is-
Which is why we would want to vote.
So the application has to be submitted. And if the district decided to apply, they could decide now or down the road whether we wanted to do one, two, or three of those options, but just to get the application out of interest. Because then CIC Health would reach out directly to the district and then work with us or whatever district to see what fits best.
To be clear, parents have to consent to their children being tested. If they say no, they go home and quarantine.
Absolutely.
So we're not forcing testing, they can just go home. But we do have to enforce quarantining if they do not get tested.
Correct. As a matter of fact, there's a consent form right on the DESI site. That's standard form. Everybody's going to get, everybody in every district will get that same form, spelling it all out. So they've already got that all in place, just to make sure that it's uniform and-
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one, one quick one, because this seems to be the easiest way to get a test. Somebody's at home at night or in the morning and they feel terrible, they're going to want to get tested. I know we're telling them to stay home, but how do they get tested? Can they get tested through this system? Without coming, I mean, we don't want them to show up at school, obviously.
Well, I, that question was raised. And what CIC said was that they do work with, they do do services outside of school, but they didn't actually say how that would affect, how that jives with-
I just worry that- Anybody, I don't know, I want to just say students, but they're going to show up.
I'm just wondering too, I mean, the same as if, you know, a staff person or a student or whatever wakes up and gets, goes to school in the morning and they don't feel well and they didn't go to the doctor and get tested. I mean, I don't know if that's different or- You're right, I mean, that's a, it's a wild card that I don't know how much control anybody would have.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
All right.
Thank you.
Well, so there can be a motion to move forward-
With the safety-
With the safety, right, the COVID safety checks. But with that motion, we would apply on August 20th, which is the deadline, before August 20th, which is the deadline. I have a feeling this is going to be modified. And so at our next meeting, we will update you along the way. But I do think we need to get our application in, because after August 20th, we would no longer be eligible at all.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to instate the, the routine COVID-19 safety check as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussions?
Just a union question. Do we have to put that it's contingent on union approval in our motion so that we don't?
So that's only for the staff. The students would be a different situation because the students are contingent upon parental consent.
Yeah, no, I-
I just want to make sure that we are-
No, I got you, but I think, I think we're moving forward. If they put a kibosh on it, then that's on them, but-
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we're, our wording is correct.
My signature? But I just want to make sure that we have the, I don't want to apply for something without your approval.
Any questions? Any further questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item number six, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, item six.
So we did, if I may, I don't know if you want to make a motion first or just kind of explain it, up to you.
What did we say? Remember when we asked the attorney, did we have to make a motion?
I think you're supposed to make a motion.
I think we are.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the substitute teacher rates for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion.
So just a brief explanation, our previous rate was $85 a day for substitutes with a bachelor's degree or more. We are proposing that go up to 95. And our previous rate for substitutes that don't necessarily have a bachelor's degree, but typically are enrolled in some sort of program, but not always. Well, and I'm thinking of that with the tech substitutes. WTA, if they're an electrician, they didn't get a degree, but they certainly have the skill. That was $70, we'd like to go to $80. And then our long-term subs, there's no change for, and neither for our building-based subs or retired WPS teachers. So this would raise the rate for daily substitutes essentially. And we did, I did provide a chart of local districts, if you needed a magnifying glass to read it, but I did provide it. Just the way it printed off. But I think it's, I think this puts us more in line of where other districts are.
I'll just say, when I read this, when I read the agenda at my office earlier, long-term substitutes would be paid a bachelor's step two on their 91st day. I read that as 91st birthday.
If they're still teaching at 91, they should get a lot more than that.
Big difference, 91st day, not birthday. Any more comments?
Bo? I just think, first of all, thank you for all the work on this. I know there were many hours put in. I just think after the whole conversation we just had, who knows what's going to happen? And if we need substitutes in the classrooms, which we're going to need eventually, I think we at least have to be competitive with the area. Because somebody from Westfield could go teach in Southwicke Ragalam or something like that. And we've got, we're at least now, hopefully, keeping them at home. Keeping them at home, yeah. Yeah, no, I think it does.
I think it does, yeah. That was my only question.
While we perhaps have an audience maybe watching at home, if someone is interested in substitute, being a substitute, where would they go?
Schoolspring.com, it's constantly posted. Just type in substitute teacher, and we could use you.
Okay, thank you.
And the long-term sub for the 91st day, just so you know, that's, that, you know, that's in a situation, maternity leave, a long-term illness, things like that.
Any more comments? Okay, all in favor, please.
We need a roll call.
It's money.
Didn't we, I thought we made a motion?
No, we need a roll call.
We need a roll call, not a, it's money.
At the time we changed the rules, I'm sorry. All right, would you call the roll Mr. Secretary?
Ramon Diaz, yes. Diane Mayhew, I'm sorry, she's not there.
She's still absent.
Beau Sullivan.
Yes.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Humison.
Yes, and the motion passes. Thank you. All right, we've taken seven out of order, item number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the homeschool applications HE 2122-1 through HE 2122-45 for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, discussion.
Just a question. So of the 45-ish, right, was it 45 students? That's the full number of students that are, are homeschooling, 45?
That is just, they come in, it's in the rack, that's the first batch.
Okay.
Forty-five students to date.
To date.
Is that what you see?
Yeah.
Just like Dave Voland, they'll keep coming in from that one piece of-
I understand it. No, that, that answers the question. I, I did note that 90% of that population were returning and, you know, just, just about 10% were new. Is that pretty consistent year over year, or did those numbers bounce around still?
Usually it's around 90%.
Okay.
We're anticipating that it would be lower, that we're hoping-
Right.
-somebody will go to the virtual school.
Right.
Hoping that a child that were face-to-face will come back, but with the new Delta variant, you know.
We're starting to see, I would argue that I think in time, or might see that with this, depending where things go in the next few weeks, with school starting, we may see homeschool applications increase. We are seeing the virtual school applications increase, no question.
We've been having conversations with families who are firing off homeschool for the first time. And we've been discussing the virtual school option.
Sure.
And we've had several that have chosen that over homeschool. So we'll be waiting to see, we'll have a better grasp on it in September, October.
Very good, thanks.
Any more comments? All right, we can voice vote this one, I think.
Yeah.
All right, seeing no other comments, roll, voice vote please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item is item number nine, the superintendent's report.
Next week we will have more. Today, the only thing I have is that we have a, we do have a vaccine clinic scheduled for Westfield High School, August 26th from 2:30 to 6:30, if folks are interested. The flyer is on our Facebook page, and it will be on our website very shortly. But if you just go into Curative and type Westfield, you can register for, for that. And we have some generous donations from local businesses that anyone that gets a vaccine that day will get a door prize, so. Small incentive.
Very good. Any questions of the superintendent? Anything else?
That's all I have today.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I don't really have anything to say tonight, but at the next meeting, perhaps more. So we can move on to item number 11, the school committee update.
I'm not sure I'm supposed to do this here, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Pat Kennedy and his whole music department. We had a, for lack of a better term, a music camp.
Band camp.
Band camp, sorry, it was band camp. They played music. They didn't sing, but they played.
I did go see them as well, they did a great job.
They did. I was outside with the, down at the Boys and Girls Club. And he said they had 85, at least, show up to take part in this. So all of the music teachers, Pat and his whole crew, did a great job. So they taught the Boys and Girls Club kid how to drum, so it was very loud in the club for a week, but it was worth it. So I just wanted to thank them for that.
I'm glad you brought that up, and I, because my son was in that camp and it was a hot two weeks. So, and they did a lot of their practicing outdoors and then their concerts were outside. But you make a great point. They did a phenomenal job. I talked to Mr. Kennedy last Friday at the concert, the second concert, and he was delighted because he said that he's wanted to do a band camp for a long- and he was delighted, because he said that he's wanted to do a band camp for a long time. Obviously, we've got a lot of talented musical students here in the city of Westfield. And he wanted to keep that going so that he could then feed them into the bands at higher grades. And it went great, it was a lot of fun. I also want to compliment you and say thank you to the Boys and Girls Club for hosting that program, as you've done with so many programs. So, we really appreciate that.
They, I will give them another applause line, because they went through the club. So, every kid that was at the club during summer programming had a chance to either drum or play an instrument or... So, everybody that was with us that didn't sign up for band also got to play. So, it was, they went above and beyond, it was great. It was a great two weeks.
Yeah, it's great.
He does an awesome job.
Absolutely.
Give me an extra guitar player, Mr. Sullivan.
They have any trombones.
Trombone, yeah.
Just to mention, I'm sorry, Mr. Connor had raised a point about a member of our staff that recently passed away, and I wanted to see if we can recognize him.
I was hoping we could do a brief moment of silence. We could have a staff member custodian from Highland School, Paul Riscow, pass away.
So, if we could take a brief moment of silence, Paul's memory, that'd be great. Thank you. Any other news under school committee update? Seeing none, any items for referral to subcommittees?
Diane's not here, so I think we're good.
Just a question, so, we approved the student, our current mask policy, but there was a question about MASC sample policy. Is that something that we're going to look at?
I think that, so, right now, the original policy from last year does what we voted to do.
Right.
I think if we wanted to look deeper into the MASC policy, it would be a subcommittee or a committee of the whole that is previously a subcommittee. And we'd start looking at tweaking that, because the policy where we added that is also the rest of the student dress code. So, I don't want to necessarily alter that piece. So, the reason I wanted to share the MASC policy with you is, well, because it's from the Mass Association School Committees and what they were recommending at that time.
Okay.
And that can be changed as of now, too.
Yeah, maybe we just, we'll just let it play out, you know.
Right, I have a feeling in a month from now, we don't even know what any of this will still be.
I agree.
Okay. So, we're not going to refer that to a committee at this point?
Right.
If it does, I'm sure Diane will be happy to do that for us.
I'm on that committee, so...
Heather, did you have your hand ready? Okay. I wasn't sure. Geezers, I swear since the last meeting, I've gone blind. Item number 13, old business.
Voice run, Rick, when you need it.
Move on, Ray, move on.
Item number 14, subcommittee reports, recommendation. Seeing none. Item number 15, other items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to this meeting. Seeing none. Item number 16, next regular school committee meeting, August 23rd.
Do we have a time on that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Do we have a time on that?
That's back to our regular meeting, so 7 o'clock. So, again, if we did want to do anything with that, I think we'd have to have a subcommittee before that.
Okay.
So, this would be our, we're back to our regular season now. So, we typically have a school committee meeting the Monday before school starts, which is August 30th this year. And then, the first Monday of September is actually Labor Day. So, our next meeting after that is September 20th. But we could also always add one in there, it's not, was it 59 last year?
School committee meeting?
Yeah.
And then, that's not, that doesn't include negotiations.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we certainly...
Because there was a lot more than 59.
There was.
There was three a week, four a week.
All right, so I hear a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?